Welcome. This is the forum for candidates for Arlington City Council, Position One. I'm Sue Runhard, a member of the League of Women Voters of the Gwamish County. Thank you for joining us. Let me provide some background on this position. The city council is the legislative body of city government that establishes city policy and provides a framework for city administration to respond to community needs. Council members manage basic public services, sewer, water, fire, police, roads, parks, etc. They establish and enforce local laws affecting individuals and businesses, including local taxes, control how land can be used, and provide direction to the mayor. Candidates do not declare a political party preference. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan. Therefore, we neither endorse nor oppose candidates or parties. The rules for participation in this forum were sent ahead of time to all candidates, and they have agreed to follow them. I will pose the questions and will clearly state the amount of time allowed for each answer. We are using a countdown timer, which is visible to all candidates, and time limits on answers will be strictly enforced. All candidates are participating, and they are Nathan Senf and Heather Logan. The order of responses to the first question is Heather Logan and Nathan Senf. I will then alternate candidates in the starting position to ensure a fair sequence. Let's begin. You have 90 seconds for the first question. Ms. Logan, please explain what your top priorities are for this office and explain why you are focusing on these priorities.
Thank you, Sue. My priorities for this office are three. The first is to continue funding public safety, including our innovative police programs, our social worker and domestic violence programs, and safe streets programs, because people just don't thrive where they don't feel safe. My next priority is to promote Arlington's historic downtown with events for families and support for small businesses, especially maintaining relationships between the city, the Downtown Arlington Business Association, and the Chamber of Commerce, because our charming downtown is our cultural and historical heart of our city. And another priority is to support adding amenities in Smokey Point, including a permanent food truck court, housing options, complete streets, access to public transportation, and new businesses in the Cascade Industrial Center, because Smokey Point and the Cascade Industrial Center are the vital economic engines for our city. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. Mr. Senf?
Thank you, Sue. My campaign focuses on three things. The public safety, trying to have a connection between the city and our public works, our public safety measures such as police and fire. I like to also support small businesses and their owners in connecting with grants using our Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Downtown Arlington Business Association on development, housing, civic duty, education. I also would like to connect with our city beings on education. So I like to be an educator. I am one. So education on how we do public roads, how we do infrastructure is very important, and so I would bring that to the table, creating a safe environment and an educational environment for all of our community members. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. For the next question, you will also have 90 seconds, and we will begin with Mr. Senf. The question is, what qualifications and experience make you a good choice to address these priorities?
Thank you, Sue. Great question. So for these priorities I have presented to you, I think that I'm the best candidate for this because I have been in the background for many years, even when I was in high school. My dad owned his own business, so connecting with small business owners I've done since I was little, running the cash register at 10, knowing how to be respectful and talk to people about the needs and their voicing of their opinions, and how to go to those things and go and create actual solutions and problems, or creating solutions to the problems to make sure that they are heard and they get what they need. Another thing is connecting with public safety, working with the fire department. I've also connected with many of my classmates in fire and getting their voices and their concerns taken care of, as well as police. And then also education. I'm a planning commissioner, so I go through the community and also talk through development, infrastructure, and how that all works, and some things may be confusing, so I take the time to connect with them and get the knowledge and the items that they need so that way they understand how we grow correctly with common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Logan?
Thank you, Sue. The qualifications and experience, there are two that are primary points of differentiation in this race. For knowledge, I have a Master's of Business Administration and a deep knowledge of complex organizations from my career. They've made me a strong council member. I'm able to understand public funding sources, also known as taxes, and how best to allocate them. I understand that some come in regularly and some don't, and that we have to flex our budget when those things happen. My five years' experience on Arlington City Council has been my opportunity to understand every department, work with every director, and build a collegial relationship with the city administrator. Knowledge and experience are what I bring to the table for Arlington City Council. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. For the next several questions, you will have 60 seconds to answer. We will begin question number three with Ms. Logan. Given competing and conflicting priorities, what factors will guide your finance and budgeting decisions?
Thank you, Sue. I love this question. Finance and budgeting decisions must always consider the present and the future. It's not enough to have enough money for today. Our job is to leave enough for another day. We cannot overspend today and then fail to fund the future. Therefore, the factors that will guide my finance and budgeting decisions will follow my priorities. First of all, ensure appropriate staffing and equipment for public safety first and then other departments. Next, promote Arlington's historic downtown and continue our family-friendly events. That sounds like a cultural thing, but getting tourists into Arlington actually becomes a revenue-raising situation. And then support amenities in Smokey Point, including housing options and access to public transportation and new business development. Smokey Point is the engine, the financial engine of our town, and we need to move forward with that, and we must always maintain adequate reserve funds. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. Mr. Senf?
Thank you, Sue. My priorities also deal with the governing body that has different backgrounds, industries, and lifestyles. It can be tough for all citizens to get what they need. I understand that. So it is my job with those conflicts to find a compromise, a solution. Smokey Point, two different sub-areas in our community, needs some infrastructure help or developing help, and I get that. So we are following the state constitutions, following the state guidelines, following the city guidelines and codes when it comes to the local decisions. Again, dispersing money will come down to for the community, not one group.
Mr. Senf has frozen. Would the timer stop the timer? I think we were on... I can't remember where you stopped, but...
I have a note. Can you see me now?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay. I... I know where I can continue, if you can hear me.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I will like to create a space where there's transition for a safe environment.
Stop the timer?
Things, if there's a conflict in these areas, I focus on that community with the benefits of the majority and delegate the money to the cause with the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Number four, we will begin with Mr. Senf. What changes, if any, would you like to see concerning how the city is run?
Thank you, Sue. This one, I am on the planning commission, so this question comes into connecting with our citizens based on development and planning. So I would like to change how we interact with the planning commission and public works to get things done correctly the first time. A lot of constituents talk to me about having road infrastructure issues before development. So I would like to change how we allocate our funds and delegate those for developments and work with them and developers to figure out our road systems first before we give our money to a developer just to develop a whole bunch of houses or apartments. So that's one thing I would change. Another thing would be the fact that the council and commission boards need to always have a transparent background. They need to work together well. There's some miscommunications from here I've seen, so I would like to bring that to the forefront in transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Logan, same question?
Yes, thank you, Sue. I would just like to make a point of correction. We don't give money to developers, so perhaps I misunderstood Mr. Senf, but I want to get that out there on the table. I don't want to mislead anyone. Changes to how the city is run, we are a strong mayor form of government by charter, and I do not advocate changing that. I support the city administrator position as chief operations officer. City councils should function as the legislative branch. I do not believe that council members should make operational decisions. That's the city administrator's job. Rather, they should keep a sharp eye on outcomes, and we meet weekly, so we have plenty of opportunity to do that. And then we should work with the city administrator to correct any issues that we don't think are headed in the right direction. So I actually would not change how the city runs because I support the strong mayor form of government as per our charter. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. What will you do to support a vibrant economy in Arlington? Ms. Logan?
Yes, thank you. Well, a vibrant economy requires opportunity, and it must promote sustainable growth. Therefore, what I support is housing availability. And when I say that, I mean what we call starter homes, homes that are less expensive to get into, that help us meet the Growth Management Act targets as specified by state law. I support family wage jobs availability. I support business diversity. Access to public transportation, including the Swift Gold Line that's been promised for, I believe, next year or maybe the year after. Arlington has turned out to be one of the top users of zip cars since Community Transit put them in our town, and it proves how much we need that support with transportation. And I would also advocate for access to social events and opportunities, especially those for families. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. Mr. Senf?
Thank you. Thank you, Heather, for pointing that out. I misspoke, and yes, I do understand we don't give money. I appreciate that. My stand on this is giving an opportunity for a vibrant economy is based on communication and meeting people where they're at, and then giving them the opportunity to expand. I love the DABA program at Downtown Arlington Business Association, still the Valley Chamber of Commerce, a lot of meet-and-greets, special ribbon cuttings. I like to promote those. It also does help with small businesses from their homes, so promoting that as well, because a lot of mom-pop shops need that assistance. I also think that having a small business in this town is their backbone, so promoting their things, their owners asking questions, also shopping local helps promote local businesses with grants and awards, and that's what I would support.
Thank you. Mr. Senf, what measures, if any, would you propose or support to keep housing options affordable in Arlington?
This is in my wheelhouse, because I'm a planning commissioner. So currently, we're adopting code or writing code in planning commission that does have affordable housing or low-income-related things going into it. It is in the works. It is between, I believe, 15 and 25% of the apartments or housing developments coming into Arlington will have to have a low-income-related area. So I do support that it's struggling. I'm a 28-year-old, and I still can't afford necessarily with my background and career in teaching to have an apartment. So I stand by prioritizing that we provide code so that way developers are allowed to have a low-income housing and let that be focused on families or couples or even single people that need it, and that would be sufficient for them, so therefore they can grow and have a thriving economy and also have paychecks that go a longer way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Logan?
Thank you, Sue. I support different housing options, but Arlington has a 95% occupancy rate in our apartments and very low housing stock with a median home price of $612,000. Therefore, my response to this question is different from Mr. Senf. I think we need affordable housing, which is different from low-income housing. We need smaller housing, and I would like to see the planning commission and the city working with developers who are interested in increasing our housing options, including townhouses, cottage houses, bungalows, call them what you will. They are small houses, but they are fee-simple ownership, and I think that is still part of the American dream. Arlington currently has 920 housing units, likely to begin construction in the next two years, and most of those will be apartments and cottage houses. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. And we'll begin with Ms. Logan. What actions, if any, should be taken to address the effects of climate change in Arlington? Please explain.
So our comprehensive plan, which we just completed this, well, last year, along with most other cities in the state, it's required by state law, and it has an extensive environmental plan. I fully support this plan. The elements include preservation, greenhouse gas reduction, increased tree canopy, public education about our efforts, and livability of our city. I'm proud that the water that we get in our municipal wells comes from the Still Gwamish River, and we return it to the Still Gwamish River cleaner than we got it. I am proud that Arlington has been a member of Tree City USA for more than 20 years. Thank you, Sue.
Mr. Senf, same question?
Thank you, Sue. So as Heather says, we're both pretty much on the climate as making sure our city is safe and clean for our citizens. I 100% agree. I also am proud to say we also love Arbor Day. Our city does a big turnout for planting trees and using the Still Gwamish River as a way to also understand our connection to tribes and tribal lands. We go through in the planning commission through SEPA, which is an environmental protection safeties thing with our comprehensive plan. So I understand that we already have it built in, and I would not change a thing for that. We're putting in tree buffers zones this year for going into codes on where we can build and how many things we can build based on rivers and streams and wetlands. So I'm proud to say that we, as Arlington citizens and developers, really strive to educate our future members and citizens that this is important so we have safe, clean areas to congregate or enjoy for the future.
Thank you. The next question, we will begin with Mr. Senf. What actions, if any, should the city take to address diversity, equity, and inclusion and its practices?
Thank you, Sue. So this question, in small rural communities like Arlington, it's been a constant question that's been asked. I do not mind diversity. It's the same goes for anywhere in our country with our US Constitution. You're allowed to have your freedom of speech and right to express yourself. But as a government, I do 100% agree that if there is something like a parade or something that goes through, they have to go through a permit process. They're allowed to do that. If it's conflicting on maybe somebody's safety or health, that's somewhere where our city council would have to work with the community on that, with our public safety. But I like the idea of including all different kinds of lifestyles and groups and ways to do business with our community members, because we're all different backgrounds. If we were all the same, we'd be a boring, boring community. So I enjoy having the ability to do like Hispanic Heritage Nights and the ability to have parades from churches to parades about different walks and lifestyles of life. And in the park, it's allowed. Other than that, the government should not also intervene on being proud to support one thing over another. So proclamations, I'm not a fan of necessarily, because that's where organizations and the community can do it more. But as a government body, we're there to keep the peace, but not necessarily to claim one thing over the other. So everybody does get a voice, but doesn't get elevated to a higher level. Thank you.
Ms. Logan?
Thank you, Sue. I think that diversity, equity, inclusion, DEI, if you will, has become a political hot potato. My stance is not political. Mine is one of simple respect. No matter what we call it, diversity, equity, inclusion, that is all words to describe respect. And I think all employees, residents, and visitors should find an environment of respect in Arlington. Council members should model this behavior. Human resources should extend respect to all applicants and employees, and visitors should be able to feel that they are welcome in our town, regardless of their race, creed, color. It is all about respecting one another. The city encourages policies and activities that support cultural understanding, mutual respect, and inclusiveness. I fully support this approach. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. For the next question, you will have 90 seconds. And we will begin with Ms. Logan. What is a strategy which could be used to enhance collaboration in your work on the council? Give an example of how you have used this strategy.
This is a great question. Thank you for asking it, Sue. I think that something folks don't understand among electeds, one alone cannot accomplish anything. You have to work with people. So I encourage anyone, when they hear an elected say, "I can do it," ask questions of that. I think that you must collaborate on camera to be effective as a councilperson. A strategy I use frequently is to create a safe space to disagree. We are not always going to have unanimous decisions. We are not always going to agree, but it must be safe. We must have trust and respect with each other to disagree and not get the side look, the huff, you know, the subtle, the subtle microaggressions that signal a lack of respect. Respectful disagreement is the key to encouraging all colleagues to speak up without fear of reprisal. You never know who will come up with an unexplored idea that might clear a path for an agreement that all council members can support. A personal example is, we recently had a disagreement about a proclamation for a school bond measure, and one of the council members misunderstood what other council members were saying, and temperatures were getting high. I stepped in and encouraged the original council member to listen to their words, and it made all the difference when she understood.
Thank you. Mr. Senf?
Great question. Yes, I, in collaborative measures, my background has dealt with students as a teacher. I've dealt with also community members as an organizer in the city. And being part of a team means that you don't think just of yourself. You have an idea. You're part of a team. If you don't show up and you don't do your research, and then you don't have respect, that team loses its bond. And so collaborative measures are something that we strive to do well in a council. I have met with commissioners and commissions and different committees over the years and people in business associations and working to find solutions together and coming up with curriculum and things for my students and some things we don't agree with, but having respect. The other thing I have to state is, if there is something that is wrong and somebody else calls you out, it's having the respect of, "I was wrong, correct?" Can you just give me a synopsis of how I could do better, or what we could do better, or why was I wrong, instead of the side comments or the little lulls or things that people do in the microphone to do dramatics? So I do understand that respect is really important when you collaborate and make sure that the solution is for all of the people, not just yourself. Because if you're on the council and you say, "I'm going to do it," as Ms. Logan said, that's a question that we need to have people ask. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we will begin with Mr. Senf. Is there anything else you'd like to bring to the attention of the voters?
Great question. Thank you. My biggest concern for the city is education. My concern is people are not understanding fully, or they see one side. So as a former reporter, I do not enjoy the idea of bias or being told one thing and being swayed. I'm also a voter myself. I vote for things since 2015, as I was legal to vote. And so education is key. I am here to talk about things. I'm here to be a counselor or a person of the community that also can reach out to have questions answered by people that I know in the networks of our elected officials. So if you think one thing, do not start with your emotions. That's something I teach my students. But start with research, asking the questions, observations. And if you think, eh, that doesn't sound right, and things are printed or done to go against you, you better research it and get the information true out to those voters. So that's what I like to do and tell the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Logan?
Thank you. Some things I'd like to bring to the attention of the voters. I bring three primary attributes to my reelection campaign. We've covered knowledge, experience, and seeing the whole city, not focusing on any one neighborhood. I also would like to say, having grown up in Alaska, I am an independent thinker. Alaska's a land of independent thinkers, and I do not believe in group think. I do not believe in group talk or action. I think each of us needs to do the work required to be an educated and informed city council member and then be prepared to come to debate our independent decisions and explain why they're important to us. I think all of us become lobbyists. We have a point of view, and we have a why, and we need to explain it to our city council members. I'd also like to say that I am very proud to have been endorsed by IAAF Local 3438, the firefighters and EMTs that provide rescue services to Arlington.
Thank you. This last question is about your life experiences, and we will begin with Ms. Logan. Please tell us something about your life experience that might surprise or intrigue voters.
Well, I kind of blew my own answer, Sue. The thing that I think is most interesting about my background is that I did grow up in Alaska. As everyone will remember, Alaska was only a state in 1959, and so when I was born, there weren't a lot of municipal systems that were set up. And those of us in rural areas frequently had to learn to solve our own problems. Well, that was a real boon for my life, because I've always found a way to make things work. I'm comfortable with my own convictions, and I also seek to understand both sides of an issue and to make the best decision for the citizens of Arlington and not necessarily the popular decision. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. Mr. Senf? Mr. Semph.
This is a great question. Um, when people ask me why Arlington, and I said, "Well", I am the fourth generation of Semphs to grow up in Arlington. My great-grandpa ran a shingle weaving mill and owned a farm and a billiard hall during World War Two. My grandpa helped with the Copeland lumber and the hardware store, and my dad owned his own business for thirty-nine years. So I've got roots. And um going away gave me the opportunity to understand that there's no place like home. And so I saw as a reporter for my first career in news before I became an educator that, hey, I like politics or I like government, and I like how it works. And so promoting that as an educator with middle schoolers has been a dream. And then adding on top of running for city council in a position my grandpa held in the seventies and eighties makes it so much easier, and I'm an extrovert. So I like to talk to anybody and and give my life story and testimony and see where that leads them on their decisions. So, thank you.
The League thanks these candidates for joining us and running for office. We encourage our audience to explore additional information about these and all candidates. Recordings of all League forums, those recorded for the primary and the general election, are available on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website, on YouTube, and on podcast channels. Find links at L W V S N O H O dot org. If you prefer written responses, vote four-one-one dot org, sponsored by the League, is another good source of information. Ballots and your Snohomish County Voters pamphlet will be mailed starting October seventeenth. Election Day is on Tuesday, November fourth. Please be a voter. Thank you to our League Candidate Forum team and the Candidate Forum Coalition. Special thanks to Dave Moon and the Sultan High School students at TurkPride dot T V who made this production possible. And of course, thank you all for joining us. This concludes our Candidate Forum.